All right, I'll go ahead and get started. You can hear me anyway, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening. Welcome to our, this evening, to the city, not only the City Council meeting of the City of Lenore. Tonight, we will be installing our new council members who were recently elected. But first, we want to have a special, special time to honor Kim Edmiston, our council member who has served with us for now over three years. You know, thinking about Kim and what she's done, three years ago, the council was kind of in a position, we had just lost council member Stillwell, passed away, and we needed someone to come on and hit the floor running. And Kim Edmiston did that. She came on, and when we needed someone to step up and be a part of this council, this community, and help lead our community, and she did. And we will always be honored by that service that Kim has given to this city and county. She came on and quickly, her learning curve was very easy, and she did a great, it wasn't easy, but she did a great job. She did a great job of picking up on things so quickly. Kim is just wonderful in the community. She is, not only she gives her time in so many other things, not just City Council, and not just the job at the radio station, and her job at the Caldwell Memorial Hospital before that. She's now serving, of course, as the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce Board, and we appreciate that service to this community. But Kim just gives everything she's got all the time. It's been a pleasure for all of us to serve with her these past three years. She served out the remainder of the term, was elected for a two-year term, and she has just been, you know, it's, it's been a pleasure, and we are so honored. Kim, I'm gonna read this, this resolution to you, if you'll come up and join me, if you will. We're gonna, I won't present you this, but whereas Kimberly P. Edmiston has served faithfully and diligently as a council member for the City of Lenore beginning February 17, 2015 through November 30, 2017, and whereas as an elected official, Kimberly Edmiston has devoted her time, energy, and talents to this city, and provided experience, sound judgment, and ardent support while serving on various committees, to briefly name a few. Served on the city's highly successful 2008 All-America City Committee, which we made a long trip to Tampa, and that was a great experience. Current chairperson of the Caldwell County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Executive Board, appointed to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments 2018 Workforce Development Board, appointed as the City of Lenore's representative to the local Emergency Planning Committee, and current member of the Lenore Service League, and provides significant community service to the citizens of Lenore. Whereas Kimberly Edmiston has reviewed, deliberated all facts, matters, facts, and proposals presented before the City Council in a fair and sound manner, and at all times keeping the best interest of the citizens as a first priority. And whereas Kimberly Edmiston has worked constantly to further Lenore's economic, cultural, and aesthetic development, as evidenced by the many successful projects accomplished under her excellent leadership as councilwoman. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lenore City Council hereby expresses sincere appreciation to our friend and colleague, who through her leadership and dedicated service to this city, has earned respect and has made lasting contributions for the betterment of this city. Be it further resolved that I, as Mayor of the City of Lenore, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens, do hereby extend our deepest gratitude and highest commendation to Kimberly P. Edmiston for her devoted and outstanding service, this the fifth day of December 2017. And we have one more thing to give, present to you. The thing that I enjoy giving the most of all things.[283.12][283.12](laughter) And I don't get to do it all the time, but you know, it's good.
No matter what they say.
No matter what.[291.12][291.12](laughter) But I would like to present this key to the City of Lenore, presented to Kimberly P. Edmiston, council member, in recognition of her dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens of Lenore and its, to the City of Lenore and its citizens, Lenore City Council, from February 17, 2015 through November the 30, 2017. Kim, this is your city. We're proud of what you have done to be a part of it, and we appreciate your service to our community, and I'm proud to present you this key.
Thank you so much.[325.12][325.12](applause)
And then I'm gonna let any of the other council members that would like to say something, they will.
Well, the first thing I said when I got here tonight is I have a moratorium on tears, so we're not, nobody here is to make me cry. If they do, then there's gonna be difficulty tomorrow. It might be a different story. I have it on great authority from another famous Edmiston in this city that this thing doesn't open anything.[355.21][355.21](laughter) It's good practice, but...
He tried. He really tried hard.
But it is definitely one of the keys to my heart, and I can't thank you enough for it. I don't know who this lady is that they were talking about a lot, but it's an honor to have served, to have been mentored by folks in this room. We have the best citizenry, the best staff, the best government, the best council, the best leadership of any city in the state, any city anywhere. And it is a privilege to have served. I have learned so very much. It has made me a better person, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.[401.12][401.12](applause)
I think the rest of the council will, will agree. Sometimes you can't hear everything Kim's saying.[416.87][416.87](laughter)
I was the only one that... That's not always a bad thing.
It's not just...
Why does Kimberly Edmiston have that difficulty hearing her?[425.12][425.12](laughter)
I'm not...
We give her a hard time about it all the time.
But, but, when you do hear what she's saying, it means a lot. I've, I've had a chance to serve, and this is, no disrespect to anybody else on this council, she has, as Joe said, she picked up running and has learned, and has been a very quick study, at a very critical time when the city needed someone to do that. So we're gonna miss you. You served the city well before you were on the council, and I know that you will even beyond today. So it's been a pleasure.[454.81][454.81](applause) You know, we've, we've had a lot of transition in the city lately, and some of them were from the police department, and they had these little shadow boxes, and they gave them with a revolver and a badge, and I was concerned just about...[472.31][472.31](laughter)
How does that work?[475.62][475.62](laughter)
But Kim Edmiston, as Todd said, it has been a pleasure serving with you. You did come in and fill a very vital role during the time that the City of Lenore needed someone who could hit the ground running, and you certainly did. And as I've told you before, this is not the end. It's just a different capacity. So we, we hope, we look forward to continuing to work for you. Thank you.[500.21][500.21](applause)
(laughter)
Come on, get it, give it a word. Um, Kim and I worked on Leadership Caldwell for ten years, ten years together. And she called me and asked me when, she, she said, "I'm thinking about doing this position, and just thought it was, was great. Everybody said it right." She just came right in, picked the ball up, and just, and ran with it. And I'm not gonna say it's been a pleasure, because it's, it continues to be a pleasure to work with you, and all levels. If you don't know Kim at this level, you hopefully will know her at, at all the other capacities. You sort of just can tell by the people that are in the room of how much of an impact she makes and continues to make in this community. So you, you keep on keeping on, girlfriend. You're being...[559.91][559.91](laughter) And our new, our new council member, Bill, we welcome you as well. It's gonna be an honor to serve with such a great, great group of people, and, and as she said, it's the best city. So we look forward to having our new friends on, on board and continue to serve. So, Kim, thank you so much.
No sermon.[585.66][585.66](laughter)
Kim, I don't know what else to say, but thank you. And I say that because a lot of times when I couldn't get online with my laptop, I've got to ask Shirley for a hard copy. Kim would all the time share her screen with me. So I'm gonna miss that so much.[610.29][610.29](laughter)
I have that system on.
So Jonathan, wherever you at, get your, get online and everything.[618.79][618.79](laughter) But just thank you so much for your friendship and the fun and enjoyment that we've had serving together these three years.
2008?
And we've been riding with the mayor and so many to the different places. Always relied on you for some, for some sanity.[639.79][639.79](laughter) We just thank you, and I'll miss that. So thank you so very much for, for your friendship and the love that you've shared. God bless you.[650.12][650.12](applause)
That's it.
So Kimberly, first I'll say that it was wonderful having another senior, another councilwoman, serving with me. But I met Kim back when she was at the hospital in Leadership Caldwell, and I remember seeing her, she was part of the orientation. I said, "This is a powerful woman." And she was someone that I really, really admired, that had, I think has been a great friend, a mentor. And when I heard she was interested in becoming a member of the City Council, I was quick to make that nomination. And I know we'll continue to serve together. It's heartbreaking that you're not with me, but I know that the world has bigger and better plans for both of us, and I'm sure you'll continue to represent our city well. And it was a great honor to work with you, and you're just an example for us to all follow, especially women. And I'm just grateful that I had the opportunity to serve with you, and such a great friend. So we'll be calling on each other. We got to campaign together and support each other, and it's really nice to see how we all supported each other. We'll welcome Jonathan, but we do have a special, you know, City Council, a special city, and Kimberly, you'll always be a part of that.[736.62][736.62](applause)
You're hitting cleanup.
I know, I'm six. That'd have been why I closed it.
Closing arguments. So several people mentioned that you came, yes. So several people mentioned that you came in and hit the ground running. And when we were deciding who would replace Ron, I told you several times, you're gonna regret this decision. And what happened at the very first meeting? You got sworn in, we had the regular meeting, we went back into this closed session, and what happened?
I think I'm the only person that ever got sworn in, seated, and had to vote to accept the city manager's resignation.[781.73][781.73](laughter) Ever, as their first vote.
Jonathan, where are you doing? He's not resigning, I don't think.[790.87][790.87](laughter) There you are. He's not resigning yet, I don't think.
More is going on.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure working with you. It was nice having someone that, as nerdy, as nerdy as I was, we talked about comic books and movies and Comic Con and that sort of thing, which was refreshing. Nice to have someone like that on council. You've done a lot of great things. You'll keep doing great things, and it was a pleasure working with you.[813.37][813.37](applause)
(laughter)
Huh? What? Huh?[818.37][818.37](laughter)
I'll be very brief. It's been an honor and privilege to serve with Kim. She's made a lot of tough decisions on her three years here, but I think the best one you made is higher than me.[836.23][836.23](laughter) It's been, it's been great, and you treated staff as a professional. We appreciate that. So wish you very well.
Thank you.
Kim, you're not, you know you're not through. You do know that. We're gonna keep you busy doing other things. You've already served this city so well. Your daughter and mother are both here, and we, we're glad you're here. Thank you for sharing her with us these past three years. It's been a great pleasure, and we are honored. So, but it's not done. She's just taken a different role, and that's, and that's not a bad thing sometimes. So we appreciate that very much.
I appreciate them letting me drag them along with this.
They do.
Well, the part of it that's been...
Thank you for all being with us. We're getting ready to go into our council meeting in just a few minutes, so you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like to. We won't bore you long, but we are going to do our first, gonna be swearing in our, our council members that were elected, and our newest council member, Mr. Jonathan Bill, and we are glad that he is with us. Look forward to talking about him.
Is that your personal?
That's my personal.
Join with please, share with me.
Mine's already up.[984.12][984.12](laughter) I already found it.
It's already your job, Mr. Kim. I have to try and spray it. He tried to get himself out of his...
I'm not...
I go ahead and sit and write it.
That's a nice voice.
Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the City Council meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, December the 5th, 2017. We welcome you here this evening. Tonight, as we get started, of course, we're gonna be doing our Oath of Office in just a few minutes, but first, as we always do at our council meeting, we start with a moment of silence, and we will remain standing after our moment of silence to do our pledge of allegiance. As we go to that moment of silence, I would like for you to continue to keep with your, your thoughts, your prayers, and your hearts. Our terrible tragic loss, our young gentleman student at High Brighton High School last week, it was a terrible tragedy, and we will certainly all want to continue praying and thinking about their family. And I also like to mention at the end of that week, what a great thing we had happen, as High Brighton High School won the, the Western Regional Championship. Couldn't have come at a, a greater time for the, all of us, for our hearts and for that family, for that to happen. And I think it uplifted so many for them, and we wish them the best of luck as they go to Chapel Hill this coming Saturday and play a team from down east for the state championship, their first time to get a chance to do that. And we are, we are certainly all behind them, and we will continue sending up everything we can to, for them to play the best game they possibly can and, and do that. But it's, it's been one of those weeks of tragedy and, and ending in a time of, where we can, you know, try and up together for their family. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Now, if you will, please join the council for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, our first Oath of Office will be for Councilmember Crystal Chrissy D. Thomas, and I will ask our honorable clerk of court, Kim Clark, if she would administer that oath to Chrissy and her family.
I'd like to just say, expounding a little bit on what you just said, Mayor Edmonds, talking about the tragedy and then the, the happiness surrounding High Brighton this week. You know, I'd also like to point out all the things I've seen this week, all teams from west, groups from south, that have also reached out to share their condolences with the family. I think that's wonderful. Shows support of our youth across the county for each other. And then in reverse, like you said, the success they had at the end of the week with their football. I've seen people all weekend long from all areas of the county that are excited and are traveling to Raleigh to support High Brighton. So I think that's very uplifting for us as a community to see the youth coming up and supporting each other across county lines that way. And I'm just, I think that's a great thing.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited for you. Thank you for sharing it.
As I was telling Chrissy earlier, I'm gonna do ladies first.[1228.12][1228.12](laughter) I want to congratulate all the returning council members. I think it's wonderful to have you on. You've shown a lot of dedication to our city. I also want to congratulate Jonathan on his win, and hope to see lots of good things about him in the coming years as he serves the city as well. Chrissy, would you like to tell us where the Bible came from?
This actually is a Bible of my uncle Sylvester Thomas, who was, served as a magistrate for many years for the city, and thought this would be appropriate. Would be very proud, just to keep him in memory for my family, but this is my uncle Sylvester Thomas.
I worked with Sylvester, and he was a wonderful man. If you would place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Your name is listed on the oath. It's Crystal D. Thomas. So as I say, I state your name. If you'll replace, if you'll repeat the whole name. I state your name.
Crystal D. Thomas.
Would you please state, Crystal D. Thomas. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution and laws...
That I will support the Constitution and laws...
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
...that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
...to the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
...and to the constitutional powers and authorities...
To the constitutional powers and authorities.
...which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established.
...for the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
...that I will endeavor to support...
That I will endeavor to support.
...maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
...the Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with...
Not inconsistent with...
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Crystal D. Thomas.
Further swear...
Further swear.
...that I will execute the duties...
That I will execute the duties.
...of the office of, of council member...
Of the office of council member.
...for the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
For the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
...to the best of my ability and the judgments.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, I said ladies first a while ago. Gentlemen, I'm not gonna make you find it out. Who wants to be next? David, do you wanna come?
Before we do that, I'm sorry to go.[1403.83][1403.83](laughter) The rest of you were trustworthy for a while there. Did you take me a while to get here? Maybe go first.
Now, do you have someone you want to hold the Bible? I saw your body, and I have three votes who could either lie. If you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, your name is listed on the, at the side. Not the side.[1438.12][1438.12](laughter) I'll say, oh, it's David F. Stevens. I state your name.
David F. Stevens.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...and laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
...that I will be faithful...
That I will be faithful.
...and bear true allegiance...
Bear true allegiance.
...to the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
...and to the constitutional powers and authorities...
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
...which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established.
...for the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
...that I will endeavor to support...
That I will endeavor to support.
...maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
...the Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with...
Not inconsistent with...
...the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, David F. Stevens.
Further swear...
Further swear.
...that I will execute the duties...
That I will execute the duties.
...of the office of council member...
Of the office of council member.
...for the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
For the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
...to the best of my ability and judgment...
To the best of my ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.[1510.87][1510.87](applause) I started saying Perkins.
You're the man.
I don't have the right, she's over there.
She has.
Did you get her something?
Yeah, right.[1527.12][1527.12](laughter)
I'm sorry, did you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and your name, as it's listed on the oath, is James I. Perkins.
James I. Perkins.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution and laws...
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
...that I will be faithful...
That I will be faithful.
...and bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
...to the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
...and to the constitutional powers...
And to the constitutional powers.
...and authorities...
And authorities.
...which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established.
...for the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
...that I will endeavor to support...
That I will endeavor to support.
...maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
...the Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with...
Not inconsistent with...
...the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, James I. Perkins.
Further swear...
Further swear.
...that I will execute the duties...
That I will execute the duties.
...of the office of council member...
The office of council member.
...for the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
For the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
...to the best of my ability and judgment...
To the best of my ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, Councilmember Thomas and Perkins and Stevens, back to our council. Thank you for your service to our city, and look forward to one more year. Great service. At this time, I will introduce the Honorable Beverly T. Bill, Superior Court Judge, retired, who will administer the Oath of Office to Mr. Council, newly council member-elect. In a few minutes, he will be council member, Jonathan T. Bill, his son. Welcome.
And wish for your son to hold the Bible for you. All right. Now, let's worry at this place for a bit. I, your leave, I'll bring his back to you. All right, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and your name is shown on the certificates, Jaws of Tea. Repeat after me. I...
I, Jonathan T. Bill.
...solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...and laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
...that I will be faithful...
That I will be faithful.
...and bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
...to the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
...and to the constitutional powers...
And to the constitutional powers.
...and authorities...
And authorities.
...which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established.
...for the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
...and that I will endeavor...
And I will endeavor.
...to support, maintain, and defend...
To support, maintain, and defend.
...the Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with...
Not inconsistent with...
...the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
I...
I, Jonathan T. Bill.
Further swear...
Further swear.
...that I will execute...
That I will execute.
...the duties of the office of council member...
The duties of office of council member.
...for the City of Lenore...
For the City of Lenore.
...North Carolina...
North Carolina.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...and judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Always a time when gifts are sometimes made, new, newly...
Always a time when gifts are sometimes made to newly members of bodies. John, you're signing that with your pen, which is a gift, state-issued pen. And, just say, I think I have some cough drops here. You'll need them.
Can I remind people I didn't play the state-issued?
Kim, here's one that Councilmember Perkins stole. Thank you, Kim.
You're very welcome.
Captain Bill, so would you take Councilmember Perkins into custody?
I'd like that to be after the meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Bill, we welcome you to the council. We're honored to have you serve with us. We look forward to many years of service on this council. Thank you very much for wanting to be a part and wanting to serve your city and county in the way that you do.
Congratulations to all, and especially so to Judge Beverly Bill and his son Jonathan, and their continued service to Lenore and Caldwell County.